All right. All right, oh.
Just in time.
Just in time, you're walking right in. Come on. We'll give you a minute. All right, we're recording. A decent, uh, welcome everybody to our regular scheduled November fourteenth, uh, for the finance meeting, if you please join me. Thank you, thank you everyone. All right, um, first thing I'd just like to make a motion that we add to our regular meeting, uh, again, public works. Uh, repeater, uh, there's a piece of equipment that needs to be done for the spring. Spring hill, so.
I will second your motion to add it to the agenda.
Excellent, and any questions about that? They're all good, everybody in favor? These muted, she looks like in a, are you in a quiet bar, you're trying to get out the background?
Yeah, I wish I was, but I'm not.
Hey, dear, are you? All right, so, uh, public input, uh, first thing on our agenda, I know we have parking wreck here, is anybody else in the public input like this? Have anything, correspondence, Mary? I know you're in Spain or something for two weeks, but do you have any time left in the mail or?
We have nothing.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, again, we have the October tenth, uh, regular scheduled meeting, the minutes, uh, did everybody have a minute to go through, is there any corrections?
No, I could make a motion that we approve the minutes from our October tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
Excellent, this is the second, any discussion on the minutes? Everybody was there or or not there? All right, all in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, moving right along. Oh, sorry, did you abstain, were you not there?
Yeah, I just, I wasn't there last time, so I abstained.
Okay, thank you. Right, Mary, you got that?
I got it.
Um, okay, next thing, again, um, we asked for an update with the parking wreck, and I know everybody's been working on it, so, uh, we'd love to hear what's going on.
All right, so, um. Now that we're in November, we were able to sort of look at. Where our program costs would be after the first session and sort of project going through. Um, the school year, because most of our programs besides summer camp run, um, September through June. Um, so we're kind of able to look and approximate what we would be short. Based on what was in the budget for last year. Based on that, I mean, I'm gonna go, I think you got the form that I had given you with what we're kind of doing moving forward.
Yep.
To make sure that our budget in our department is being fiscally responsible. Um, Greg has been very helpful with helping me create a worksheet. System with Excel that is really just breaking down each of our bigger programs. Moving forward, um. The commission, I. With Brad's help and Sevy's help, um, we have much more detailed reports that the commission is seeing. Where the money is being spent, where we're allocating expenses, where payroll is being spent. We're tracking all the participants, the days, expenses, scholarships. Um, we produce some of our scholarships these days, uh, we tend to, most of our scholarship kids are. Kids at the board of ed will contact us about that, you know, are in dire straits, and those are usually the kids where. We don't question and we allow them to participate in some of the programs. You know, just an example. We pushed a kid through to before and after care because. If we didn't allow them to enter, TCF would have been called, and they were, it wouldn't have been a good situation for the child. So that's where most of our scholarships are happening. We're increasing fees for summer camp, um, just on a note, I'm sure most people know, but. We didn't realize that minimum wage besides going up in June is now going up again in January. So that definitely was not planned for, which I guess now with the state of Connecticut, that's gonna be something that is looked into. Um. In September or October and every January, minimum wage will be increasing based on cost of living. So that was a four percent increase, which we were not expecting. Going into this whole knowing that we were behind in our budget.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but you're saying it was never in 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 last year's budget, no one ever talked about it.
I, I.
I wasn't even aware until I think it was announced on the news that minimum wage going up January twenty twenty-four myself.
My, what my recollection is, is that it was gonna go up to fifteen, and then in January go up to seventeen or whatever it's gonna be. And I remember clearly that I, maybe it wasn't parking wreck, but it was discussed, you remember?
So it was state, it was passed by the state.
Yes.
So, we had discussed, we knew the state increased from whatever it was up to fifteen every eleven months. So what the state also did at some point. Is announce that they're gonna adjust it.
Yeah.
Every January first. So the adjustment for this year, which was announced a couple of weeks ago, was four point six percent, so minimum wage is.
I see what you mean, you you didn't know the percentage. I'm sorry.
Um, and starting January twenty twenty-four with our winter flyer, we have increased fees. Uh, we used to have an out of town quarterly fee of twenty-five dollars per quarter, we've now gotten rid of that, and we're charging a ten dollars on top. Of every program for non-residents. Um, so that should generate more income on our ends. I've been having a lot of positive conversations with Board of Ed and the athletic director. Um, we did blow another pump at the track building, which last year had, last spring had cost us five thousand dollars out of our pocket unexpectedly. Board of Ed did pick up half of that this year. For this fall, the one that, fortunately, it was the old pump that blew, not the new pump that blew. Um, and it was an underwear situation. So, they also picked up the cost of the porta potties that we had to bring in for the two weeks, they split that cost with us. Um, and moving forward, we have had discussions about. The facility, the athletic facility specifically in the school complex. Of having a working relationship where we would have discussions of what needed to be updated, or if something happens again in the future. There would be some cost sharing versus parking wreck taking all of that on. We're reducing excess staff, we have in-town basketball starting, we are planning on reducing that payroll by ten percent this year. Um, our numbers are pretty much back to where we were last year, and we reduced staff significantly based on last year, last year staffing. Um, summer camp, we plan on reducing. Whoa, significantly, and hopefully we'll get sixty thousand dollar less payroll. Road rates. We will. Down those numbers a lot. Uh, we will be looking at the schools. Created a new volunteer system where you used to just. Kind of just try to go by word of mouth to the school kids for volunteering, but now they have an online system where we input. Opportunities for volunteerism, and the kids can come to us, so I think it's gonna be a much easier way for us to get volunteered, versus asking people to work to get paid. Uh, because kids these days are always looking for volunteer hours. Creating sponsorship packets, um, definitely looking to create a standard sponsorship package versus. Our typical one that we did for basketball, we were able to generate fifteen hundred dollars in sponsorships, which will go towards the cotton t-shirts. Um, I'm hoping to be able to sponsor our larger events, like our movie nights. And other things so that we can bring back some of the events which we did not have this fall. Uh, we used to do a Halloween night, we decided not to do that in order to save some cost. Before and after care will be changing. A lot for next year. In the pack, Board of Ed employees did have, um. Fifty percent off in the morning and we're free in the afternoons.
I'm sorry, Rachel, I'm just slowing, but I suspect everybody else is already there, when you say next year. Calendar year or fiscal?
School year.
Fiscal.
Fiscal year. So we will be letting the the school, the Board of Ed employees know. That moving forward, everyone's paying, um. The schools are also going out to. So if Bob has an elementary child, and he's a teacher in the elementary school, the schools are. Christine is reaching out to the principals and saying, you know, after school, instead of pay for aftercare, can Johnny just? Go hang out with Bob in in his classroom, which is fine, because I feel like we would have enough people that are Board of Ed staff. That would be utilized in our program.
Waiting list.
There's a waiting list, and we will also be giving priority to people that can pay for five days a week for the programs. Versus part-time people that may utilize just like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Priority given to people currently in the system, currently in the program for this full year. And then priority will then be given to people that are willing to pay for the hundred and eighty-one. Morning hair day, the hundred and seventy-one aftercare days. Because right now it's kind of pick and choose, you don't have to go every single day.
And you won't, even then, the difference is there'll be some predictability.
Yes.
And if they, people now, if they don't show up, they don't have to pay, even though staff is there. That's insane. Not as insane as you can see, not as free perhaps as the discount. Hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of revenue, but anyway.
Um, so that is what we're doing, and and based on the numbers, um, that were in the budget for. This year. If we were to run the program that we are currently running. Our expenses would be short. Two hundred and. Sorry, thirty-five thousand. One hundred and two dollars.
Uh, and. You mean, well, the loss.
The short.
Um, but we would be bringing in that money also because these numbers are based on. So preschool in the art, in our expenses for the budget was, I believe, forty-five thousand dollars, but we will really be bringing in sixty-five thousand dollars.
Are you just talking about the program line?
Yeah, uh, yes, the program.
Okay, because that's not the total altogether. The projected shortfall, that's just in the program.
That's just the program line.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so in, for fiscal year twenty-four, I'm sorry, so no, no. For fiscal year twenty-four, that's the year we're in now.
Yeah.
Yes.
The expenses are expected to be.
So in the program.
Public program line.
See, expecting a shortfall of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, or overspend, however you wanna say it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If, but that's assuming they ran all the programs. Obviously, if the Board of Finance doesn't. Wanna make any adjustments that they're gonna have to adjust. To get down to their number, which means. I don't even want, but they would have to go back and figure out what that is, because that would be.
If we're at the answer question, um, if we're spending two thirty-five, what's the revenue side?
So, what do you wanna finish? So there's also a salary adjustment, right?
Yeah, so the salary judgment, based on the before and after care salary right now. If projected out, it would be the same that it was in September, when September is a good month to figure it out, because September has the most days. For the most part, there are other months where we don't have aftercare, six days, because there's. You know.
Holiday.
Holiday, so September was a good month to pick it, we would be short thirty-seven, two, five, five. In salary. If we, to take us to the end of two. Based on what was put in to. The budget for this year.
But that, that's.
We're still not talking about revenue.
That's not taking into consideration if you were gonna make adjustments in staff, is that if you were with your.
We have actually. Before and after here in the schools is running at the bare minimum. And we started that at the beginning of the school year.
Okay. Sure, I have an idea.
That our state mandated.
And that also.
So Rich, I know, I apologize if I'm jumping ahead, if I am, let me know, if I add these up, I come up to about two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, roughly.
Yes.
That's the two thirty-five for program overage and salary overage of thirty-seven.
And then Brad did, um, suggest to me to, because typically, because summer camp starts. In June, we do our staff training still in June. Um, which averages out depending on supervisors or just regular staff to about nine hours. So, we're. Ten thousand, but now, again, that's, I'm going based on what our staff was last year, so I feel like that number will be lower because we will be reducing staff.
A minimum wage is also going up.
And then our wage is going up, and assuming. Minimum wage will go up again next January, um, which shouldn't affect. Summer twenty twenty-four.
So, so are you kind of just expecting the salary shortage of thirty-seven? To be greater?
About forty, should be about forty-seven.
In because of the training.
The total number should be two for about two eighty-two.
Okay, two eighty-two is total, and so if, a-again, I just wanna kind of get the sense of it, all right, so, um. That's compared to, I think, what we were seeing two months ago. Of negative three eighty-five.
Right.
About. So you all picked up a hu- over a hundred thousand.
Tightened up a few things.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of that is the trending of the way they run their program, summer camp. The program account salary, they spend most of their money in July for a lot of that stuff, so it's hard to straightline, but I I know, knowing Bob, he didn't just straightline it, because otherwise the law's pretty much bigger. Um, but yeah, they have. They have, that's with after making a lot of adjustments, and some of the biggest adjustments like, um. Like they have a sixty thousand dollar. In today's salaries, adjustment in what they plan to do staffing wise for camp. That doesn't help twenty twenty-four at all. For twenty twenty-four, camp's pretty much done. Other than like, the week that they're doing training. That'll fall in the end of twenty twenty-four. You know, but ten thousand dollars, not a lot when it comes to camp staff, like. Camp's expensive for us to run staff-wise. It brings in a lot of revenue.
But revenue wise, we're we're actually ninety-one over where we were last year. And that doesn't include November, because. We're all not even halfway through November yet.
Yeah, so Rich, is that the full list of of expenses, so we should be thinking two eighty-two?
Yeah, two eighty-two and change.
And we'll talk about revenue with Brad later on, but, you know, I I think John mentioned this a lot, you know. There's, with these programs, there's a lot of value, and and you know, and and I don't wanna just start slashing, I mean, I see ten percent reduction. Were you just heavy on the basketball camp, ten percent? So you just cleaned it up and 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 it's gonna run the same?
Yep.
You know what I mean?
Like we're streamlining everything as as. Best we can to still have, what we're hoping is still have the same quality, because in the end. You know, and and you used to have three refs on a court, and now you have two. The two refs are actually gonna work harder, so I think in the end it'll actually be a better quality. Um. And that's it, we'll just yell the hits, it'll be fine.
There was some. We're like, we're like, we're overstaffed.
Okay, great.
I have a question, going back to the first page. Um, you were talking about scholarships, do you have any sort of scholarship fund that people can contribute to?
So, we've been working, I've been working with, uh, Dan, um. With the town has. Is considering starting a scholarship fund, um.
For Park and Rec?
Where you can earmark it towards certain things.
Okay, all right.
Um, we do have that ability on our online system, but I think that's something that I would have to work out, um, with Brad, a lot of our things. A lot of our scholarships are also run through Megan too, so if somebody.
Right.
Gives us, like, feed and raise some money with their concessions, and. We gave it to Megan to a lot, um.
I understand, because there's that fund that.
Yeah.
Uh, Megan has already.
Yeah, and Megan. Tip for the last couple of years has gotten a grant from the Alice Fund.
Right.
Um, and so, we'll get requests upstairs going, cut a check to Bethel Park and Rec.
Okay.
For X.
I just wanted to make sure that that was cutting into your bottom line, that you, that it was somehow being offset.
Yeah, we're we're looking towards. Finding ways for people to donate, to create scholarship.
Yeah, because I don't currently have it, no. Because if you're just giving to a town's scholarship fund, you don't really know where it's going, so. I'm just thinking it might have more attraction and more appeal if it's.
Believe in that conversation with Dan, I think it 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 does launch, you're able to earmark where you want your money spent.
Right, like a restricted gift.
Yeah.
So, okay, and then number five, I just wanna be clear that you're, so, are you saying that the ten dollars would be ten dollars plus twenty-five, so thirty-five a quarter?
No, so.
Right, that's what I understand.
If you, if you, if you took a program, you lived out of town, you took a program in the fall, you just paid a. Twenty-five dollar extra fee for the fall session.
Oh, okay.
Now, if you take Pilates and it's eighty-five dollars for a resident, it'll be ninety-five dollars for you.
So some people will say.
I understand.
It could cost.
So the program is individually costing you a ten.
Dollars more for non-residents.
Okay.
Besides the program money.
Correct.
But it was twenty-five plus the program. Now it's just ten dollars.
Thank you for translating that.
Well, it's a manslaughter, right? Yes, son. All right, so. Tonight you started the presentation, and I think the first thing either I heard or first thing that made, or or, I guess, made me upset is the scholarship. You said that you reduce scholarships. To me, that scares me, you said you were gonna reduce the scholarships that you were awarding to kids. Did I, did I hear that incorrectly?
Yes.
So you weren't gonna reduce?
No.
Okay, because because I was afraid that you were, you were lessening your expenses by.
No, 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 like, we're taking into account, we're we're tracking what we're, who we're sponsoring.
Okay, but you, but they're gonna get a scholarship.
If Board of Ed comes to us.
With a need.
And has a need, absolutely, we've never, we've never questioned social workers ever with that, because they never contact me. Unless it's a dire situation, and sometimes they'll say it's not a dire situation, and sometimes the Board of Ed will contribute money towards. That child's program, they just wanna get them in, but no, if if a social worker said to us, like I said, that TCF, I'd like, just send them. Fine, yeah, no, we would never do that.
Because you could ruin a kid's innocent, but and then feel like they're poor, and 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 you always want them to be a part of it, so. So, then, but I I think the biggest thing I took away from our last meeting was. The Park and Rec Committee was gonna sit down and figure out the winners and losers. I heard that you were gonna raise fees tonight, and that's how we were gonna generate an additional ninety thousand dollars. But did the commission look at any of these programs and say, hey, this is a winner, or this is underattended? And maybe we ought to consider getting rid of this and losing expenses that way instead of raising fees, or how did that all work out in secret meetings?
But if a program doesn't have a a minimum to make it profitable, we don't run it. So if, um. And usually the programs that get canceled are more the adult fitness programs. Um. If we don't meet the minimum to make it profitable, we'll go to the instructor and say, listen, if you wanna run it with six people. This is what you can run it at. And we're still making money, otherwise we cancel it, like, one of the programs we ran for the first session in the fall. We're not running this session, because it didn't meet the minimum number that we needed for it to run.
Rachel, can you explain, because I didn't understand some of this at first too, but we've talked a lot. You really have two different models when it comes to fees and programs. You have like camp and VAS, but then, can you explain the seventy thirty programs? Because a lot of your programs are like your seventy thirty, right?
Yeah, I would say.
But explain one of them first.
The bulk of our programs are seventy thirty, so. You, those are, summer camp, before and after care, are not, basketball are not seventy thirty programs, so. If we're running Pilates, we're running preschool, if. The instructor is making a hundred dollars, if the program costs a hundred dollars, we're making thirty, the instructor's making seventy. So all of, all of our other programs that we run, which is probably eighty percent of our program versus. Our larger programs. Are all instructor-based and all minimum and maximum number-based. So, we're always making money on those because we're not running them. If we're not going to make. Money, so. Like our school programs that we run. All of those make money. Because they get twenty-five kids in them. And the instructor. Gets his seventy and we get our thirty. Uh, but again, like, if Pilates doesn't have. Ten people, she doesn't run it. So. But you don't lose anything.
I think one of the things you found diving into this is like, you had talked about increasing fees for summer camp twenty twenty-four. Some of what you found is. You weren't. You didn't have control, it, I'm gonna say you, but like. The Park and Rec Commission didn't have control of what really, or a good understanding what summer camp costs. Yeah, so it's not like we're trying to make extra revenue by increasing summer camp fees. You're just trying to make it kind of get close to break even, right, you're not, you know, but because it was trailing behind. And that's what we saw, some of what happened in twenty twenty-three. They exceeded their revenue by two hundred and twenty-five thousand, but they exceeded their, if you just take salaries and programs, by three hundred thousand. Some of that is. Summer camp got more crowded again because they were using it, and they weren't. Feeding it or running it to a point that was trying to break even. Like, I don't wanna speak for you, but before and after and summer camp. You try to run those as close to kind of break even as possible, for the most part, before and after, after the change. For next fiscal year of not, of now charging the staff, the Board of Ed staff. Should be a fairly profitable program.
Yes.
Um. But it hasn't been because of that hundred thousand dollars that they were waving.
Yeah.
You know.
Question.
Right, we, so the commission, we did look at, like you were talking about winners and losers. When we talk about the programs, in many cases, the programs were doing. About what we thought they were doing, they weren't, they weren't, they weren't huge losers, I think with the exception of summer camp. Was definitely a big loser in terms of, uh, revenues not matching costs. And one of the things that we looked at was. What other towns are charging for their kids to be in these programs? So that we're not coming up with a number. You know, just to satisfy our budgetary needs, but a number that is comparable to towns that were similarly situated to us. You know, we're not comparing ourselves to Darien, but a town like New Fairfield is fairly. Are close, or Burfield are fairly close to us. And, um, and then you can say, hey, listen, we. You know, we're offering this program, we can increase the price, and we're not penalizing the kids in Bethel. And. It can work out where if we make staff reductions, we account for all kinds of little costs, like. Transportation, pizza nights, all of that stuff can be accounted for now, because it's all being broken out, thanks to a lot of help from Brad. So we're getting, you know, all the information that went into these things, so. Rachel and the commission are able to make fully informed decisions on. Jeez, this is what we have to charge, or this is the surcharge for this event, they wanna go to a, they wanna do a trip, well, the trip. Didn't cost X, it costs triple X. Now we know what to charge, so that it reflects the cost to us.
That, that's certainly one important part of the equation, what about their, their cost structure? Were you guys able to get some sense from our neighboring towns, how they staff these programs, what, what their cost structure is, right? To see whether they're running at profit or whether they're running at loss, they may have a different philosophy, and we, this board has wrestled over the years with. Is Park and Rec a service, or is it a, is it a pay-for-as-you-go? That's a bigger topic, but in your, in your work, your research, did you get any sense for what the cost structures were in addition to what they were charging?
I'll have to say, we've done the research, are are we close with our, what was charged for programs? Um, I have, did not reach out to other towns to see what. Their staffing and and other things were, but I can. I can easily.
Is some of that staffing also mandated?
Yeah, and so we try to kind of follow what OEC would be doing, um. Park, Parks and Rec are on the cusp of. People, um, there's been a lot of legislation trying to throw us into, under OEC, the Office of Early Childhood, which. Would not be good for Parks and Rec, because that would be a significant. Change in what our cost structure, I mean, I, because you would have to have nurses, like, right now we don't have to have nurses on staff. It it would change even more significantly the ratios that we have at camp. Uh, but we kind of try to follow suit, so it's like one to ten with a certain age, one to seven with a certain age, you know, one to five with a certain age, we've kind of tried to stay within that structure. But yeah, I mean, I I can easily reach out to the towns that are comparable to us that have larger programs. I find that we run a lot of programs that other towns don't, like our preschool program, most people don't run. The level of preschool programs that we do, things like that, but every, every park and rec.
Yeah, so if you, what Bob probably, oh, I, curving, we're wrong, but like programs, I mean, comparing like programs.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's not, my question, this is just curiosity, so when you say that of the Board of Ed, they have a student that needs a scholarship. Where, how does that money come to you, is it from one of their funds?
Well, I guess. No.
Okay.
So.
A bag of money, a bag of cash.
So.
You have to, on one of your schedule, you talk about waived fees.
I thought I should say waived fees, more filled in.
Okay.
I should have known the different word.
This would be a different conversation probably with Brad, but it says, just the overall view of this this kind of thing, how it should be more organized, because it's all kind of a little messy in the sense of. If it comes from social services, if it comes from DOE, whatever, it's like this, right, so this person needs a scholarship, but the the Board of Ed's not pulling it out of their activity fund. It's just taken out of, you know, you're just not making that.
And sometimes they do.
There's no revenue.
Right, so it seems to me, maybe we can have a discussion about that, that just to have the money coming from one place and documented, you know what I mean? It just, yeah.
I think one of the things that like. Rachel and Woo, and I know Greg's been a lot of conversations of cleaning some of this stuff up, that wasn't cleaned up for. Obviously, a while, and that's why we're here.
Oh, yeah, well, that's why I mentioned it, because it's now I understand more things that are going on.
Well, like, uh, we were sitting in Mr. Carter's office. When Rachel started talking about the wave B O E fees. I'm like, how many are there? And I sat at the computer, cause this, you know, holy crap.
Yeah.
I'm afraid, I don't work on bread. I might have said a different word, but.
So close.
This is for prime.
Crap with biting my tongue.
I I can tell you this, the commission had no idea they were getting. A reduction in fee.
Oh, no kidding.
We were never told that.
I've not seen as much Park and Rec for how many years? No, this is great.
But it's, but it's crazy. That that was not.
A little crazy.
Not made available to us.
Yeah, why do some parents pay some bill? It's the same thing.
All of it. It it, the whole thing has been, it it's the way it worked before. Like you could say that it was a disorganized process, Byzantine would be another.
Yeah, Byzantine.
Another description of it. And that's what a lot of time has been spent with Brad and Rachel. And some members of the commission like Greg to get into the and figure out where everything goes and how everything was run. And it's sort of like making sausage. You really don't wanna see how it was done, but we had to do it and. The commission members were um, pretty much constantly surprised at. How business was conducted before.
So is it fair to say that no programs have changed? You've just decided to lean out the staffing to bring expenses down. But services have stayed the same and we're still digging a hole about two eighty five is the projection, right?
I think that's right.
If we ran everything that we're currently running and we have done no new programming. Um, we've put a kibosh on that for this fiscal year and we've had people that have reached out to us. Trying to run different programs, whether it's um, teachers. Or, you know, our teachers that are currently doing programs, wanna do another day, we said not this year.
Okay, so new programs that weren't run last year, we figured out there was a huge hole.
Correct.
Okay, but but last year, when we figured out that we were way over those programs, you're still maintaining.
And those programs that were maintaining during the school year are programs that. Technically only run if they're going to make money for us.
Yeah, but even like Rachel and I have talked a lot about this. She goes. Can I still run new programs? It's gonna bring in money. I said, because of the way we book expenses and we book revenue separate, the answer right now is no.
Yeah, that's the issue. So we're talking about the two hundred and eighty two thousand dollar change. Um, shortfall for this year. That that is a cost, a budgetary line item. It is not. In a business sense, a loss because the revenues are running.
No, it's an expense to the town to run these programs. Forget the fees that are going to load in.
Right, but revenues are gonna be coming in to help cover.
Yeah, we don't see that in the budget.
You don't see the reflection, but it will be, ultimately, that money is coming in.
But Brad, i- if we're gonna change the program line, we're gonna follow the next discussion is about the the revenue.
So. Wanna talk the revenue piece now?
Say it again.
Do you wanna, do you wanna delve into revenue?
Are you taking that card up your sleeve?
Yeah, yeah. He likes to finish strong, you know.
So, here's what Rachel and Lou and Greg and myself all set down to talk about. So, last year, Park and Rec brought in round numbers eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. On a budget of six twenty, but the budget doesn't matter for this, for twenty twenty four. I budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because we didn't have that eight fifty number when we budgeted. Um, so right now, our budget is seven fifty. Last year is eight fifty. The projection for this year, because of some of the things they've changed, another thing is a million dollars.
Yeah, makes sense.
Um, and that's before, we're not doing anything with BAS. And the school staff until fiscal year twenty five. That number's gonna jump even higher in twenty five. Um, right now, Ra- Rachel mentioned earlier, when you just compare the first three months of twenty three to the first three months of twenty four. They're already ninety two thousand dollars more than the prior year. So, but. You can't just like extrapolate that out because some of it's timing, you know, like what hit in October versus what hit November first last year. Um, but even November's number for last year was thirty eight thousand. So even if they didn't bring anything in November, there's still fifty thousand dollars over where they were the prior year. Um, and their biggest revenue is summer camp, which they collected in April and May.
So the two hundred and fifty thousand more than last year projected.
Yeah.
Is from increasing the fees or enrollment?
Cleaning house too.
It's, no, well, but increasing fees, however they got it.
Yeah, that's it.
It's a little bit of everything. A lot of it's increasing fees and some of it is just. They um, their programs are packed.
You're rolling it up.
I I must have taken a bad note. So in fiscal year twenty three.
Yeah.
Revenue eight fifty?
Yeah.
Expenses six twenty.
Uh, budgeted revenue of six twenty.
And then fiscal year twenty four, the year we're in now.
Yeah, we're budget, right now, the current budget calls for, it's projected at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Just put a number in to make sure we're gonna cover that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so but if we had to, like Rachel went through and came up with what her expenses should be for twenty four. If I was projecting what our revenue should be for twenty four, I'm comfort comfortable at a million. My thought is it's gonna go over the million.
And what what about expenses for twenty four?
So that's.
Last year, we have last year as the model. Looks like we've improved on that by one hundred thousand. I don't, I didn't bring my sheets with me from prior. So what? What does that mean for what we think expenses are going to be in fiscal year twenty four?
So. The two main problem with child's last year were salaries and programs. So she's anticipating going over those two line items, assuming they run all the same program, then they're given more money by the Board of Finance. And the town, cause I have to go to town meeting. That she's gonna exceed those two line items by two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars combined.
So what's the total expense?
So.
What was budgeted and then what's?
Alright, so budgeted between those two line items. I guess I wanted to clarify. Cause the other piece we haven't talked about is um, maintenance. So last year, they went over those two line items by three hundred thousand dollars. As a whole, they went over by three seventy one. So the two eighty two we're talking about right now is just salaries and programs. I know Rachel's done a lot of work and looked at, and the commission's done a lot of work looking at some of the maintenance stuff. Maintenance is also under budgeted, but we don't know how under budgeted until we know. How many trees the tree worn tells them they have to cut down, how many things break throughout the year? I think they're gonna be, from my conversations with Rachel, is. They're on top of that a lot more of what, it's not just, oh, it'd be nice to fix, we're gonna fix it.
You should have saved the revenue for last. Stuck that one in this.
Brad, part of that was you were gonna also look at who's responsible for what.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a lot of the conversations we've been having. Um, uh, and we, the problem is like, take the tree stuff, right?
You don't need the money.
So. The tree worn account, they didn't budget for Parks and Rec trees. Because they were always charged to Park and Rec. So it's not an easy fix of going. Any tree works, you go out of the tree worn account, cause now we're just moving the problem from their account to the.
Still a short, yeah.
Um, I was more worried about like vehicle maintenance. I was hearing that they were putting dump bodies and it was ten thousand dollars out of their budget when it should have been on the highway. Side fixing the vehicles.
Well, the, I think one of the dump bodies.
Some of that went towards.
Did go to police.
Okay, dude.
So, some of the problems we had last year was, um, I don't remember how much it cost, but a shed was purchased. That was by the turf. So that was purchased and a purchase like that shouldn't run through the operating budget. It should run through either, see if you got a donation. But was capital non-return.
Right. And maybe be split with the Board of Ed.
Yeah, and a lot of that stuff in the past. Was just done. And then it is what it is.
Tossed in.
You know, it's like we talk, we're gonna talk later about this public works repeater. In the past, this eight thousand dollars would have just been put into building maintenance, cause. Just go ahead and get it done. It needs to be happen. But if we don't budget for that kind of stuff in the operating budget, that's what a capital non-return is for.
I agree.
Yeah, correct.
Um, so back to the question I asked.
The maintenance, how much, did he give us the number?
No. But we are.
We don't know.
We'll get it.
We are very fortunate that Rachel, Lou, Greg and the team have given us tremendous detail, right? There are though, a lot of numbers moving around and I think for us, a question's kind of easy. It's what happened? And or what, yeah, what happened in twenty three? For fiscal year twenty, with purposes of better understanding what might happen fiscal year twenty four. And but in the past, we've always been conservative on Park and Rec. So, you know, let's, let's not change that approach for, because we don't wanna go to town meeting with a really bad. Question. Let's be consistent in our approach. But I think we have to really know. What's the, what's going to be the additional out of pocket that we're gonna ask the town to fund? Many of us think the town will probably say yes, but unfortunately, they didn't get a chance to vote on it really back during the budget. So I hear all these numbers. Um, I think I'm getting a decent. You know, that you guys are probably farther along than I, but I still don't know. What are we going to go to town meeting with to say, this is what we need for additional expenses? And we can make all the tree worn in and the flat beds.
Yeah.
Ever, all that other stuff. I think we just need to really understand.
Yeah.
What's, what happened in twenty three? What are we doing in twenty four? And then you go to town. We're gonna need to hear from you.
Yeah.
Right, whether this, we can absorb two eighty two.
Yeah.
Or whatever the number turns out.
Yeah.
And if you tell us, no, then I think we gotta go back to these guys and say, look, you're the Park and Rec Commission. You tell us, you don't want us using a cleaver to make cuts to programs. You all are in the best position to decide where those are. That's, that's for you to decide. We're not quite there yet. I think that was your question, John.
But but won't some of that come out, um? When, like you're saying, discussing with Dan about responsibilities and who's responsible for what? Because if they take on more and then you take it out of another place.
Absolutely.
You know, and try to consolidate it, that's a, that's an easy sell, you know?
Well, and that's why here's fiscal year twenty three, three eighty, like three eighty five stuck in my head, but maybe it's the, whatever the number is. But then here are the changes.
Right.
Or anticipate.
Yeah.
There's a hundred thousand in staffing efficiency. There's. Twenty thousand in cost being allocated to somebody else because that's where it belonged. It didn't belong at Park and Rec. But and line by line understanding so that we can, you know, for those of us who have occasionally get approached at. Restaurants in town, we can explain. And so I, I just like to see this conversation get us to that.
Yeah.
Point.
So would you rather the commission then delve into the maintenance items next and come up with a whole number?
We need.
I think that's.
I love that.
Yeah, not here tonight.
No, 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 obviously. And part of that discussion is, it is a big part of the discussion is the allocation.
Who, who, our responsibility, like we, we, we get charged for taking down two trees in front of the library. What does that have to do with Parks and Recreation? Has absolutely nothing to do.
Just an accounting grab.
It's an accounting thing. You mentioned the the shed. None of us knew about that. We also paid for the twelve thousand. Speakers at the, at the football stadium. Why was that allocated to Parks and Recreation and not the schools? So that's a big part of it. We need to, we need to come to terms with that before we can figure out exactly what that they had suffered going to be.
One of the reasons, I think, Rachel and the rest of the board hasn't. Delved as deep into that piece yet is because we're still having those conversations of where some of this stuff should be. The trees, we've been talking a lot about, but. The previous budget actually did budget for trees, but they budgeted for twenty twenty three, ten thousand and spent like forty. But they don't really have any say about when trees come down. The tree worn comes out and looks at a tree, says it comes down. You have to cut it down at that point because you have a huge liability if you don't.
Why wouldn't that be allocated to the tree warden account?
It could, but then you're just then moving the problem.
Right, we're just thinking. Park and Rec's gotta deal with programs. And by the way, it's cutting down trees too, so give an extra. Whatever.
Yeah.
But to me, it, it seems like we know at least a few of the big items. And I know we, we, we wanna be scientific about it, right? But we know that two thirty five came from programs. That's a big number. I, I don't know if I do quick math, it's got me like seventy percent of the.
Two eighty two.
Two eighty two. Then, right, you got thirty seven on salaries. Let's identify the big items. That we know, you all are having your discussion about whether where costs are are allocated.
Yeah.
Maybe you do a little bit down there, but then I think it comes from this board, then we have to ask you, Brad, right?
Yeah.
At the end of the year, when we do all of our transfers, are we gonna be like fiscal twenty three when we're scared to death that we might not have enough? Or do you think we're going to be able to absorb? If you tell us, yeah, we think we're going to be able to absorb, absorb it, use the word you can't say it. Um, that's fine, but then if you come back to us and say, it looking real thin. Then I think we may have to go back to these guys and say. Look, we hate to do it, but you gotta come up with something.
Here's our budget.
You guys know it better than we do, right? We're not the Park and Rec Commission, thank God.
And and we, and we're prepared for that.
Yeah.
We have a couple of big items that. It may not make sense. I know there's people who are against it in terms of the revenues bringing in, but if you're looking just to balance the budget. We could lop off, you know, something like before and after care.
Well, but I think folks have to.
Same like you want to.
It's not like we don't consider the revenue. So when people said, you know, if people are saying to you, well, the expense went up by by X, but you're not counting the revenue. We have counted the revenue. So I, we should be really clear to make sure people know we've been taking in that revenue. Brad has been conservative over the years and maybe we wanna continue that, but we're not ignoring the revenue.
But we can make, we can make it work as a, as a. As a budgetary matter, there are, there's a, you know, there's one big program sitting out there. That could be taken out and operated independently, give it back to the schools or whatever. So we have, we have thought about worst case scenarios, what we can do to make this work.
I could dive into it more. If the number's two eighty two that they're over in those two lines. I I don't see that we're gonna be able to absorb two eighty two in the other lineup. Health insurance, we didn't get a late number that dropped health insurance by a lot. Utilities are trending down a little bit because we've locked in the natural gas a little cheaper, but like. Utilities, I'm hoping to come in at budget on, like. Those are our big accounts that we would have room in to absorb it. And those with what health insurance has been doing, what utilities has been doing. Those, those holes don't really exist anymore. And that's what's happened last year. Obviously, the three seventy one Park and Rec went over was a huge number. And we were able to absorb it by the skin of our teeth. But I don't wanna spend the next seven months. Like cutting everything other and and affecting other departments going, you can't run what you got budgeted. Because we need to make up for the shortfall.
Well, we approved the budget and the town voters voted a budget and 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 that would not be doing the right thing if we caught another department.
To make up for some.
Make up for.
To Bob's point about we've been conservative with Park and Rec revenue, we have. I think a million is still not as conservative as seven fifty by any means. I think they're gonna be fifty grand over a million dollars, to be honest with you, with the way they're trending. And to be honest with you, when Eileen approached me with her projection for twenty four. Her revenue, she projected eight fifty, which is actually what she hit in twenty three. I budgeted seven fifty because they were at six twenty. So to go to six twenty to eight fifty.
One twelve.
Was a huge jump, but now I know how she figured she was gonna get to eight fifty. Because they were gonna blow past the expense. So.
Well, but right, and we are in November, the fifth month of our fiscal year, our ability to. Move levers. Is reduced the further we get into.
For five years.
Yeah.
So what are we thinking about? Like, what do we, where do we go?
We, we'd go to a town meeting and pull it out of the general fund, isn't that what you're?
So. If the board wanted to adjust Park and Rec's expenses by whatever the number is. I feel comfortable going revenue up, whether you wanna call it two hundred or two fifty. Um. So say we go up three hundred thousand, if we took, even if we went two hundred up, right? Let's take conservative of the Park and Rec revenue. So say we go up three hundred thousand. If we took, even if we went two hundred up, right? Let's take conservative parking wreck revenue. We know, which we'll talk about more in, in the controller report. The state of Connecticut has sent us one million thirty five thousand dollars so far between. The motor vehicle tax replacement. Or whatever they're calling it. And we got a municipal, uh, revenue sharing grant. Which we typically wouldn't get, even though every year the state would budget for it and then they'd take it away. So, and that's even before the two eighty, two sixty six that we budgeted. Comes in, because that comes in towards the end of the year. So the miscellaneous, miscellaneous state revenue. Will exceed what's budgeted by over a million dollars. So if this board. Wanted to go up two hundred. Parking wreck revenue and a hundred there. Cause we know we're gonna get it. Then obviously anything we do at this point has to be mill rate neutral. We're not, we're not issuing new tax bills. But there is the room. If you wanted to, you could go up a miscellaneous state revenue by three hundred thousand and leave parking wreck alone. All you're doing then is then creating a revenue hole for twenty five. And that's the nice thing about the parking wreck revenue increasing. And making up most of the expense increase. Is. You're not creating that hole. Right?
Assuming you're just gonna repeat it in.
Yeah. You're taking the money, but you, you're gonna increase the revenue later. That's, that's the elimination of the hole you're talking about.
Right.
At the end of the year.
And. For fiscal year twenty five. We already know about, let's call it a hundred instead of a hundred and thirteen. That V A S is gonna bring in that they're not gonna bring in this year. We also know that camp's gonna cost. In today's dollars, sixty thousand dollars less. Than it did for twenty three because they're gonna reduce staff. Some of that's gonna get eaten up by minimum wage. But if they didn't reduce staff, the sixty would become sixty three or whatever that math works out to be, four percent of sixty. You know, because minimum wage went up four and a half percent and most of the kids at parking wreck make minimum wage. You know, it's not like they're reducing staff to, uh, fight their dangers. They're reducing minimum wage workers.
I, I think we're good with the programs and salaries. The, the maintenance thing is kind of a new swing that, you know, you and I never had that conversation.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but now we're gonna dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, and that was one of the next steps, but I think one of the things that Rachel and I talked a lot about is cleaning up some of that. That seventy thousand dollars, knock on wood, isn't gonna be seventy. Because you take the twenty thousand dollar shed out of there, it's fifty. You take, you know, the.
Um, you talk about for this year, things we're not gonna be buying.
Correct. We're not operating that way anymore.
Okay.
You know, and again.
They've baked into the budget so they can keep buying the sheds. That's part of the problem.
But oh, because they were over budget.
Yeah, it wasn't in the budget and then they would just buy it and, and it went over budget.
But those days are.
So we have to go back to the budget number.
Yeah.
This is starting to feel a little bit like Shark Day.
Can I, we talk, we talk about the before and after. Well, you seem like you're always hitting to something. Is, is.
We, we, we don't wanna get rid of. We don't wanna get rid of before.
It's a loser.
It is not a loser. It will not be a loser going forward.
It has been. So, but, but you said if we have to cut, that's what we're gonna do. Why would you cut that? That sounds like a service that's town really needs.
Well, the reason, the only reason why is if let's say there was no solution here.
But why would you pick that one?
Because it comes out to two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. It's almost the entire two eighty two.
No, I know, but doesn't the park, wait a minute, but wait a minute, doesn't the park and wreck decide the importance of a program? Not that it fits the dollar amount or the check.
Yeah, but it's a program that could be run independent of parks and recre.
Somebody would take it, John.
Somebody would take it. It would be no, there would be no change in service. The same number of kids could be in it. It's just wouldn't be under our supervision.
And so what would be the benefit? Just that you're not spending the money?
The only benefit is, well, I mean, there may be a, a, a benefit in terms of, uh. Of staffing and, you know, and just making the portfolio of tasks. Uh, that Rachel has to supervise being smaller. But no, truly, honestly, from the commissioner's perspective, it's just budgetary. Because you can't make it up anywhere else. We have to like eliminate, you know. All the youth programs to get to two seventy six.
But you wouldn't get rid of.
And then it would be gone. There'd be nothing that, there'd be no one taking over the youth programs.
Reallocating it to the Board of Ed or something. It's not gonna disappear.
So, can I, and I, I think I could say this publicly.
Oh.
The Board of Ed has told us they're not taking it back. They do not wanna manage it.
Right.
And because some of the issues I believe are when they manage it, it falls under O E C.
Oh. That was probably true. Yeah, that probably is true.
So it becomes a bigger headache for them running. Rachel. Would probably love to get rid of before and after because it's a lot of work for her office staff. You know, but by filling this hole. Um, before and after financially will be a winner in twenty five.
Oh, yeah. Big time.
It will. And we were always told it was a winner, but nobody really told us about this hole that they had in there a hundred thousand dollar hole. Which when they probably started it, took it over seven or eight years ago, there might not have been a ton of staff taking advantage of it and now there is.
Yeah, wouldn't you?
You know?
Hey, hey, Steve, Steve been very quiet. Is, is there anything you'd like to add? I'm sorry.
Thanks, Nick. Uh, I'm, I'm just listening to the discussion and, but I do think. Before and after care is important for our community. So if Board of Ed isn't taking it, I'd rather fund Parks and Rec to do it. And I think having a third party take it over is. I don't know, it could be a good. Plan there, monetary plan there, but I'm not sure that the quality of care for our children would be the same. So that would be my two cents on that.
And I know, um, the first electman is not here tonight. He has another engagement. He's been pretty adamant. He'd like to keep it, he'd run a town program. Because the second you outsource it, it becomes a much.
No, we've done that before. It's just, it never ends well.
Um, and other towns do. I live in Southbury. Park and Rec does not run Southbury, uh, before and after program. A private organization does, but it's a one-off private organization. It's not a ad connection or anything like that. Yeah. Um.
Okay. So, so John, just to go back to your question, it was simply a matter of. Looking at how much is budgeted for before and after care. And trying to come up with, like you said, we may have to come back to you guys and say, hey, you guys gotta make cuts. Versus cutting all the other programs.
Soccer, basketball.
Everything, all the youth programs. They're trying, and we still wouldn't get to that number.
Yeah, in part because camp's over.
Yes.
Camp's over for twenty four. Like the Bob's point, we're five months into the year. But parking wreck wise, they're like two thirds of the way through the year.
Yeah.
So now the, the, the before and after. The hundred and thirteen or a hundred and eighteen thousand that teachers are now gonna pay, is that a real number? Or are they gonna decide that the kids are gonna go to grandma because you're not gonna pay the full price?
So it, it's a real number, but we've got people on the waitlist. So we would fill that with just regular kids that parents don't work for work left.
So it was a double.
We don't think that.
They were taking up a placeholder.
And not getting.
There you go. So we don't feel that we would have any issue filling the spots with customers, regular kids or non-Orbed parents.
Okay, so sitting here, it just seems so crazy. The committee, your parking wreck committee had no idea. These mathematical crazy budgets were happening.
None. We would see it, we would, and, and nobody telling us about this. The budget process. And sitting on other committees and commissions as, as you have too. You don't, you don't always see a lot in the budget process, right? They give you a budget. It's big. We're gonna increase it by a couple of percent over last year. You ask the questions. You're told, you know, it's all gonna work out in the end. We're gonna make it all work out. Don't worry about it. It's all gets reconciled. Even when you bring up obvious things like, hey, we know the minimum wage just went up, this percentage. These numbers don't seem to make sense. How could this possibly work? Don't worry. You know, the end of, you know, the selectmen will work something out. So. And it just goes on for years. But you know, we, we never delved into the budget to this extent. We got the numbers. We didn't. You know, we would ask questions about obvious things, but no, we didn't do like a forensic audit like we're doing now.
I think.
It's practically a forensic audit.
Yeah.
We've never, we've never had this, but on other commissions I sat on, we never had this level of scrutiny either.
Yeah, but that budget was three hundred thousand, millions.
Right, but it's, that's the same principle, right? Because it's, you know, this is your, this is your, but this is your role on the commission. We lead the budget to the, the people that know about the budget. We ask questions, we're given answers. We don't say, geez, let's do an investigation. I don't trust those numbers. You, you trust the numbers.
Yeah.
And you have no reason to because you see how things get, you know, expenses get, you know, piled on the parking wreck over the years. Because the assumption has always been. Park and Rec is, is a cash cow, so we can make them pay for all the trees in town.
Yeah.
We can make them pay for the shed, which. We did not know about. We can make them pay for the, um, sound system. Because somebody's gotta get it done. And those deals were cut with, among a couple, not deals, but you know, there's a couple of people in prominent positions. That would say this is what you have to do to make it happen. And our, our director would, 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 would be a good soldier and make it happen.
So, and, and I'm sorry, so that's a fair point. So, you know, this two eighty five that we're trying to dig out a hole. Is, you know, shouldn't be labeled on park and wreck the whole thing. If you pulled the numbers apart. You know, it seems like everybody ought to take the overages.
Well, the two eighty five number is.
Is what they gave us.
Programs.
Programs and salary.
But that's what they.
Not, not a tree, not a shed.
But if you take, if you take, obviously, parking wreck doesn't get to decide what they pay their people when. They pay a minimum wage, most of them. Like, uh, what percentage of your summer camps staff make minimum wage? Eighty percent of them?
Yeah.
Um, so when minimum wage goes up, they don't control that. But these are the two items that Rachel feels like she can control. The maintenance piece, she has some control over, um, but she has control over the sense of like. There's a hole in the fence. Is it a safety issue? Yes. Okay. We probably have to fix that. Is it not a safety issue? That could probably wait. What else can we do? You know, and I think in the past, some of those things was, there's a hole in the fence, we'll fix it. It's maintenance. It is what it is.
I'm a very big asker before I say.
So how big of a hole is in the fence for the maintenance site? Cause you haven't done the drumroll thing on that yet.
So. That's the, it's really the next thing they have to delve into.
So, so there's work to do on this, obviously.
Yeah, so last year, it was to the tune of seventy thousand. Um, between park maintenance was over by twenty three thousand, contracted services was over by eleven. And maintenance was over by thirty six thousand. Um, if you look at like in the controller report tonight, so that's four months into the year. I gotta pull the right one that I ran here. Um, maintenance is at fifty nine percent spent.
So that's the thing they're going to do to show us, right?
Just dig into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but there's work in progress.
Yeah.
They can, it's much easier to project out the salaries and programs than the maintenance, because you don't really know. You know, um.
But it, isn't it more about allocation too? I mean.
But the, I understand your point about the allocation. Whether it's them or another department, if we take the tree work out, it's keep it on the tree work and put it in tree work. And they didn't budget for it there. We're just pushing the problem.
Yeah.
That's something we have to adjust in the next budget.
Right.
We're not delving into.
No, we're not doing.
We can't like.
I understand.
Mid-year, say.
Open a tree one account, you gotta take it all on.
That's not what I mean. So saying that at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Okay. Well.
Yeah, so, so, so Brad. I'm sorry, Bob. You've been here fun, worth it. As you.
Yeah.
We can reprint. No. Don't wanna be my name up there.
My, my only, my, my. Look, um, and again, thank you to you five people for being here, right? It's not easy to be the person who's sitting in the hot seat when it's an old shucks moment, right? When, when. Realize that things in the past need to be fixed. So again, I know this board all feels nothing but, but gratitude for everything you're doing. So. Thank you. I think from our perspective, we only wanna go to town meeting once.
Yeah.
Right? And we don't want to then have to go back again later saying, oh, you know that thing we brought to you in? December, January, we didn't really have it nailed down.
No, no, we're going once, right?
So.
It's gonna be Christmas Eve, but we're doing it once.
Here, our own little gift. So, um, again, going with. Process. We, we have some numbers here.
Programs and salary. Yep.
We have other numbers to nail down, some of which you, Dan and others have to figure out for allocation.
Yeah, the allocation for twenty four doesn't really matter.
Fair enough.
Exactly. We, we can only, right now, we're not gonna go and go, let's bump the tree worn account up.
It's.
I think it's part of the process going forward. But I think, but I think that's our January conversation with setting the next budget.
Okay.
How do we budget things properly, right?
That's.
So. My suggestion would be the board could do whatever they want is if you go back to the public looking for one more money, you look at parking wreck.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not gonna go into.
And you don't try to go all, the twenty thousand dollars that Rachel pays every year to cut the grass at the police station.
No, no, no.
Let's move to the police station in the middle.
Shed out of Board of Ed, right? We'll fix this and then make sure it's.
Oh, that's something that, that's.
So how, yes, I think we're all in agreement, right? We kind of, you kind of make it a fixed point of focus. It's parking wreck. Choosing the assumptions that were in place when the budget was put together.
Yeah.
Maybe continue to do expanded tree work, maybe do some of these other things, whatever. But I think we need your help to really nail down that number so that when we go to town meeting.
Yeah.
It's a one-time thing. We get beyond it. We go into our debates about fiscal year twenty five, being better, better educated. But nobody ever thinks of this discussion again in the future. And, and that's all.
That makes.
Yes.
Well, you're. How much did this, did this shed cost?
I think it was like twenty.
Like twenty? If the shed. If the, 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 when it started, when it started feeling created, and it was a shed that was supposed to house the turf equipment.
Equipment, right? Down the bottom.
It's a twenty thousand dollar shed.
I believe, I, I use that number, I will check, but I think it was about, it was in that range.
It was, it was fifteen.
Fifty, fifty to twenty thousand. I don't remember the exact number.
Okay, I just, who authorized it to be made?
Uh, well, the, the other first selectman and, and, you know, it was needed and the Board of Ed didn't have the money, so they threw it in the.
Oh, so, oh.
So we kind of.
Reallocated.
We were, we were never part of the discussions. We never, we didn't learn about this until Brad.
The commission.
Me and the commission, until Brad told us.
I didn't know about the shed or the speaker until Brad and I started delving into the expenses, bro.
There was some demo repair too, like thirty thousand dollars.
But that, that goes back four or five years. The.
Oh, okay.
One of the big things, two of the big things that hit maintenance last year was nine thousand dollars for landscaping at the library. And eighteen thousand, uh, irrigation, which I think was Johnson School, right?
Say that again about the library that came, that was in Park and Rec?
Yeah.
And Dan and I, I, Dan and I had discussions about.
Oh, I, I know I have because I've called Megan because it looks a little bit like dry gulch over there tomorrow. But then they said that there was a garden club and I said, well, somebody's gotta figure this out, so.
What, what it.
So it's, it's not, it's.
Just being the chart of that extra hundred dollars being spent.
They were just hoping at the end of the year, everything got reconciled and, and no one knows about. First of all, and we were told the only issue with the library landscaping was that it was gonna be a problem for maintaining it. We had no idea that it actually came out of our budget.
And so Brad, if we're.
This, none of these things appeared in any information that we were given.
That's an interesting point that you didn't know.
No, we were never, no. So it's never, it never appeared a line item or anything.
If we're following this approach, it may be that you all do need to go outside of Park and Rack. To see whether these other departments are going to incur costs that under the old arrangement is gonna be paid by.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Do you wanna go to town meeting once?
Yeah.
With a really solid number. So when does that happen? When can you come back to us? Nick, Nick is suggesting Christmas Eve.
Right.
Well, that's for the vote. That's for the vote. Right, right.
I'll zoom.
But what?
I'll be, so. Um.
I'll be at.
Really? So.
Oh, of course you will.
Rachel, at this point, has the data from last year and this year. I think. Parking wreck and the commission now to sit down and look at. What was spent last year that isn't an annual cost? And figure out what those dollar amounts are to make up that seventy thousand. The. The shed was eleven five, the irrigation was in my head at eighteen. But between those two, you got thirty thousand dollars that were one-time costs.
That were in, in the regular budget. So they're doing the library again for seven grand, so.
Yeah, so then, then you're fifty grand. And if those, that fifty grand's not in there. Their maintenance was over twenty thousand dollars. And if that was the only issue we had for twenty three, we easily absorbed that and.
Hmm.
We're good. I'm not saying that should happen.
Right.
We need to tighten up the budget number.
Yeah.
Because again. They spent thirty thousand dollars on tree when they only budgeted that. And the problem is. Even though they spent thirty last year, the budget for the trees this year is ten again. Which isn't a realistic number, depending on the tree, that might be one tree. And I think we got a pretty good deal on our tree, but.
But you know how those things happen, no one wants to touch certain accounts and when when a number is too high. Those are the type of things that get caught.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And traditionally, and this is maintenance items across the board. Is. We probably haven't, we haven't budgeted maintenance as strongly as we should. And it's worked. Because there's been, it's been made up elsewhere. And when we talk about what happened in twenty-three, when at the time we were talking about not fully funding CNR, which. Is not the issue anymore of what we're talking about.
Yep.
Um. It was because fleet was over a hundred grand, park and rec was over. Like fleets usually never over. The year before park and rec was over eighty thousand. This year they're over three seventy-one. It's a huge switch. If they're over eighty-two again in twenty-three like they were in twenty-two. We're probably not having any of these conversations and Rachel and I have a conversation about budget better. Instead of. We really need to budget better, you know, like. You know, like, and control costs. You know, and we do a lot of. A lot of other departments do a lot of work to control costs. And right now parking rack is taking it on the chin and they're catching up.
Yeah.
You know, I know that sounds maybe rude, but like. Because of how they've run with revenue and everybody viewed it as as long as revenue is good, we're fine. That's not the way the game works anymore. Because when expenses are over across the board. And then we're staring down having not be able to fund something we told the taxpayers we're gonna be able to fund on the expense side. We still plenty of money to do it. You know, um, we'll talk about. Uh, in the controllers report. Twenty-three revenue, we were at one point five over because of something else that we'll delve in. Revenue's to the good for twenty-three by two million dollars.
But the taxpayer didn't vote a budget based on that.
Correct, and that's what we're tightening up now. And that's what, if I had hair, I would have lost it all over the last four months. Of trying to go through this all.
Alright, so programs are running right now and there's no big nature, cause we wanna go back once and do this, so there's no big. Issue here, right?
I think. What the board needs to, I'm not saying with a vote. You need to let them know tonight if you have any takes to adjust at all, cause if you don't, they need to work now. To make reductions in what they're doing. If it takes them a month to come back by the time this board meets again, unless you do a special. You've taken away a month for them to act. If you don't have a taste for doing a budget adjustment.
I'm in favor, cause again, there there's a value to the programs, so I wanna fix this once, but fix it. And then again, going forward. Everything's gonna be allocated in the right account, you know what I mean? This whole big pot of stew just doesn't taste good right now, you know what I mean, so.
But this is like, uh, almost like a brand new park and rec.
Oh, my God, definitely.
And you know, yeah.
We barely got a bottom number before.
Absolutely.
Will, I, I, what's your appetite? Do you want a potato with that or no?
Well, at first I was gonna say.
The reality is, is our services dead. Was it, if we cut. So unwilling. I'm willing to go.
Take people forward to fix this. John?
So. No, it's not. You rate, you raise fees and you cut expenses the best you can. You feel like you cut the expenses. All you can.
I think we're at the bare minimum possibly that we can, like, I I haven't even spent anything on, like, usually we'll get. You know, art supplies or things like that for before, like, we have spent nothing. Extra this year on any program.
And you got staffing, even though it's a minimum wage, you got that down to.
Yes.
Bare bones.
Bare bone, yep, like, we're not, we basketball, we are. We're using the basketball that are in our closet and and we're hoping they don't go walking during the season, but like, we are trying to buy. Nothing, we are trying to empty out our closets and use what we have and and really trying to be bare bones so that. We're not going anywhere else.
Well, Rachel had mentioned earlier. They didn't do the trick or treating in the municipal center this year. It cost over a thousand dollars, I think, last year.
It did.
What was it? I missed it with the mess.
So.
After COVID or during COVID, um. When we started opening up, uh, Matt did a trick or treat night like on a Thursday and.
And charged it to park and rec.
Well, park and rec bought all the candy and we supplied pizza for every office. And this year, Dan said, do you wanna do it? I said, nope.
Yep.
No, thank you. I do not wanna do it. Um, so we've really done bare bones, so like I said, that would be a program that I would love to bring back, but that would be a program that I would look. To go to see, like, hey, famous, or hey, Capri, you guys wanna sponsor something? Do people wanna donate candy? Uh, so just finding other ways to to run special events where we're not paying out of pocket.
And new pizza.
Well, like, and one of the things that, like, Rachel and I talked about, like, she keeps asking, can I run new programs? It brings in money, I said, no, cause that's how we got into this problem.
Yeah.
But for the twenty-five budget. We had already talked about, there's like a line in there like for two thousand dollars for new programs. The line in there for new programs has to be twenty-five thousand dollars. And the revenue estimate. Even though that twenty-five is probably gonna be in thirty, bring in thirty, said, we're gonna budget revenue for new programs at twenty-five too. Because even though you plan on a seventy-thirty, let's just make sure the first year we enter a new program, it breaks even.
Yeah.
And if it brings in thirty, great. But let's not count on thirty and bring in twenty-five. You know, but again, that then she knows if somebody approaches during the middle of the year and says, I wanna run this new program and it costs five grand. She goes, well, I have twenty-five for off the year, yes or no? Right now, the answer is just no.
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna go back to the taxpayer.
Yeah, not in the middle of fixing this whole thing.
Yeah, you know, this is a cleanup year and a bear, as much as we can, because camps are run, a bare-boned parking wreck dealer. And depending on what this board feels like, the town could afford for twenty-five when they give them a new budget for twenty-five. And it's presented in detail. Of. What twenty-five looks like. Twenty-five might be. A little bit of meat on the bones to run new stuff. Because of the big jump, you know, and a little. Show us that you know what you're doing. You know.
Dee, what's your feeling?
So, I mean, I think I said before, I would definitely prefer. You know, to. I would vote to fund parks and rec rather than cut programs or cut before and after care. Uh, I just wanna. And so that would be my general take on this. Um, I just do wanna say that. I think it's important that parks and rec rate sizes and rate staffs their programs. I just wanna remind us that. Um, the staff that they are using like during the summer camps and aftercare and bask in-town basketball. They're all our teenagers. They're probably one of the biggest employers of the teenagers in Bethel. And so not to say that they should have additional staff that they don't need. But those monies are going to actually support members of our our community. And it teaches them responsibility and they have really great relationships with younger kids who they're. Teaching and shepherding and coaching and. Buring and all that stuff, so that's just my comment, like perks and rec plays a role that I think is not tangible in terms of. You know, the money necessarily, it's 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 more value than the money that we're spending, and I know our job is the money, but I just wanted to say that, so that's my piece.
Thanks, Nick.
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Did you ask me?
Oh, did I crash you?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cynthia, I saved you for lunch.
I actually think, and you know, you're not cheap, I have, but I think that. Just the fact that this is, it's like a whole new culture, you know, and I feel that I want to support. The culture of transparency and all the work that you're doing, you know, because it gives me, you know, uh. Kind of an inkling as to what's ahead, and I think we should. You know, I'm not. Asking you to cut anything.
No, we're we're moving forward the process and.
Absolutely.
Running your programs and then we'll fix the.
Yep.
Fix them through, so I think Brad, I think you have a pretty good direction where we're going.
Yeah, I just, and I, I wasn't trying to put the board on the spot, I just, you know, time is literally money right now.
Yeah.
For them to act if you. Didn't want anything to do with adding, going back to the economy. So, but I do appreciate the point of. Don't come for two eighty-five if the number's three twelve when you add in the maintenance piece or whatever that number is.
Do you have a sense for when you wanna have a town?
Uh, no, until we figure this out. And again, then that's why I said, is there a big rush? Are we trying to get this done in the next two, three weeks or can we get the maintenance back in and then we'll schedule it?
I think you have time because. Pretty much at this meeting, you're telling park and rec to run your programs you ran the last year, run them as clean and neat as you can.
Yep.
And we will, we plan on making an adjustment. If it fails at town meeting, that's a whole different ballgame, but I don't think anybody on this.
I, I think it's gonna be fine, yeah.
That that would happen at a town meeting. Um. But I think by having the vote of confidence from the board of finance tonight, that we appreciate what you're doing. We understand the work you're doing. Keep working to get us a real number, but we will. Help you and work with you.
Yeah, we're gonna fix it.
You know, but I think that again. Buys Rachel and the commission time and myself, obviously, and Sebby will help in any way we can. Of looking at what were the one-time costs.
Pulling them out.
Pulling them out.
Yep.
And then looking at what we spent this year versus last year, you know, nothing gets cheaper, unfortunately, right now.
Right.
Um. And do the deep dive that Rachel's done on salaries and programs. With maintenance, which is, has been the plan all along before we approached the twenty-five budget. But I understand the board's hesitant to make an adjustment to twenty-four. Until you get into that deep dive now.
Agreed, yeah, we, you know, we appreciate it too.
Yeah.
And you guys give us a lot of good suggestions that we implemented. Trying with sponsorship and.
Scholarships, yeah.
And all, but even a sponsorship, that was your, and one of the ideas that you had, and. We are, Rachel's actively pursuing to to free costs for our beds.
Great. We're gonna keep going, alright, I appreciate everybody's times.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, okay.
Guys can play for the rest. The chairman of this department.
Yeah, it was a great year. Good. Excellent, um, so, uh. So if everybody doesn't mind, we're just gonna move, uh, Mr. Galliford, you wanna unmute yourself, Tommy?
Sure, hi, everybody.
Great, um, we made a motion to add this repeater, can you just kinda explain, uh, um, you know, what's going on?
Sure, uh, so right up at the Spring Hill Tower, um. There's a radio up there, basically a repeater radio for three separate ones, one for public works, one for fire. And one for the police department, um. They're all not one unit, obviously, for redundancy in case one fails. So anyway, that, I'm not even sure how old the public works repeater is. Um. It was probably installed when we upgraded the radios like almost twenty years ago, so it's probably that old. Anyway, it was having some issues about a year and a half ago. Um. They, uh, they did, made some simple repairs on it. It failed again shortly thereafter, um. At that time to buy a new repeater. It was probably because of the supply chain issues, like, uh, like, close to a year to get one. But they had a refurbished one in stock. At utility communication, so we spent. Um. I think a little, around two thousand dollars to buy a refurbished unit, so that lasted for about a year and a half. That one's failing now, so basically. We need to replace the repeater radio. At the Spring Hill site, and that's for the public works channel, which they use for mostly for snowstorms, um. And then fire uses it, or police will use it kind of as a backup channel because it has the same radio coverage as. Police and fire does, the dispatch center has that frequency, so it's basically just a replacement radio, a repeater radio. For a cost of about eight eighty-five hundred, eighty-five thirty-five, ten. For the radio itself, the programming and the installation. And even now, it's about a three-month lead time to get it.
Okay.
This is, um, that to add it to the BOS meeting agenda, did it go to the board?
So, I, I'm gonna jump it down, you know, you you knew this was going bad, so what, what account? There's a, out of eighty-nine million dollars, there's gotta be some account that's got eighty-five hundred dollars in there. Would that be a fair statement?
I would not know, I know the emergency, I kinda oversee most of the radio systems through emergency management. We have a budget in there of a. Of like, I think it's five hundred dollars for just miscellaneous radio repairs. So it's, I don't have it in my operating budget, but that's what the board of selectmen made the recommendation to go to through the CNR, so. So that was their recommendation. Brad, maybe Brad can answer that question, I, I don't know what other account has.
There's really. Two different pieces of that. One. Um. It's due in sixteen days, I gotta send out an email tomorrow to remind everybody. This is the kind of stuff that should be on the capital plan that sometimes falls out. It falls into that.
Well, this, but this isn't really.
But it was.
This was an unforeseen failure of a piece of radio equipment, it wasn't.
Yeah.
You know, being planned to be replaced.
The two thousand dollar repair they made last year. They took from operating to repair it and we thought it'd last longer, so it wasn't really a need until it became a need. But it falls in this, like.
What was the Band-Aid reference? Because that was because.
That was the Band-Aid. It was a refurbished one.
Right.
But a refurbished one might last you. Five years, it might last you, unfortunately, twelve months.
And that's what this lasted for twelve months.
Right, Tom, about twelve months?
Yeah, about twelve to fifteen months, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay, so. So you're saying out of, again, eighty-nine million dollars, there's no account that has eighty-five hundred dollars in. You know, so, and I'm good with the CNR.
Yeah.
But you can't have it both ways.
So, but. You wanna talk about like what just happened with parking rack, with buying a shed or putting in irrigation? All those things when they don't budget for them, now they go over budget. And that's an issue. So it. It's tough putting capital items like this. That you push into the operating. And then you don't wanna bump up the operating budget, and then when there's not a one-time expense. Then there's extra money in there that they go out and spend, cause they have it budgeted.
That's what I'm saying, so if a server goes tonight in in the closet, what happens then? If we have an emergency meeting and.
Depends on if it's a. Two thousand dollar fix. We won't buy as much equipment at the end of the year and we will suck that up. If it's a fifteen thousand dollar fix. Um, and it's not covered by insurance. Then, yeah, we're coming back to CNR for it.
Okay.
My feeling on it, um, and maybe people have different opinions on it. I think we have a board of selectmen and a board of finance for a reason. That when stuff like this happens, a shed, irrigation. Those expenses, these one-time expenses should not be buried in a budget. They shouldn't.
I agree.
That's what a CNR is for. This is how this stuff is supposed to operate. What I would like to see more is. This is a little different, but like, I talk a lot with the fire chief, so. If you know that a Zeta bunker gear lasts fifteen years and then you have to take it out of service. And you bought one twelve years ago. On your capital plan, three years from now, better be replacing those bunker gear.
That's the thing that bothers me is I call it hair on fire, you know, like, we have to, all of a sudden, we have to do something. But if you get a refurbished, whatever, you know, and it, and you think it's gonna last. Longer than twelve months, I mean, do they tell you, do they give you any idea of what? When you bought it, did they tell you how, what the lifespan of it would be?
Uh, no, they didn't, you know, they they said it's refurbished and. And, you know, there's no warranty with a refurbished unit. So we just kinda took the chance that it would. It would fix the problem, um, you know, but unfortunately it didn't, so. That, you know, within a year's time.
And Tommy, it it was a supply issue, that's why you went with the refurbished?
Yeah, yeah, because they had one available right away and at that time getting. You know, even now, any type of radio equipment, any kind of electronics, you know, they don't, they can't stock them, these, uh, u- utility companies. Don't really have a stock of them, just because of major supply chain issue, so. They will order it directly from Motorola. And have to wait for it to to come into stock, and right now it's about three months, but. Last year, when this problem came up, then it was closer to almost nine months to a year to get it. So we, my, I made the decision, well, let's get the refurbished one for a couple thousand dollars, so we have it working. And now we're at a point where it doesn't, they were going up there twice to try to reset it and and try to make some repairs on it, and it's just not. Repairable anymore.
So it's failed right now and then?
Yeah, it's failed and it's not working at all.
So the, the, the public works won't have it for winter?
Um, no, yeah, hopefully maybe by January or so, mid-January it should be in.
Oh, okay, a new one, okay.
Well, yeah.
Now, this is a need, not a want.
Oh, absolutely.
But I think Cynthia's point is. Again, like. Every.
Getting on a list.
It seems like. It seems like. Every meeting now we have. And something that broke that maybe some of this stuff should have been anticipated.
But we talked about this before about getting, you know, lifespans, get some kind of metric for. Each department to know what they have and what the lifespan is, and we can start putting it on the. Uh, capital non-recurring.
Yeah, I talk a lot to the Public Works Director about. You have probably twenty big pieces of equipment.
Right.
If the lifespan is twenty.
And they all have varying lifespans, so.
You know, like, we should be buying one piece a year, but to convince the Board of Finance to buy one piece a year. Sometimes you gotta show them what's coming down the line. If we don't buy a truck this year, we have to buy.
Snowballs, right.
You know. And I get some of that happened during COVID, because we held all the money, because we didn't know what's happening.
We thought the world of it, right?
So.
And it is, but it's just.
Just a little bit longer.
But again. It's the job of the department heads, and I'm not, this isn't in reference to this, it's the job that department heads. To show this board and the Board of Selectmen the need.
And it could have lasted five years, I mean, it could have.
That's, I'm not picking on this issue.
Right, well, let's pick on it. He can hear you, though.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I said, I I made the decision that. They have one available, we wanted to have it up and running, if for Public Works to use, that's a backup. You know, for when they use it and a backup for Fire and and Police as well. If our main channel goes down, that's always been our backup communication channel. Cause it's, it has the same range and everything as our main Fire and Police channels do.
And my rant wasn't about this, it's just about. I I tried to convince the department heads. Is your job is convince the boards. That you need it, and one of the ways to do it is through data. You know, obviously, I'm an accountant, I my my brain thinks in numbers. But if you don't show us. Why the need is there, we're gonna assume the need's really not that strong. And I don't get a vote, but again, like, you know.
Uh, you know. We've been on, I've been on the board for eight years, and I just think that. I mean, the parking rec is a really good sign. If everybody was that. Diligent, and again, not talking about Tom. But just, you know, let's get that going, and then we have more data.
Yeah.
You know.
I would like to see.
Some kind of con- conform, uh, convention, a way to do it.
I would like to see more department head, um, interaction with this board throughout the year. It used, when I started here twelve years ago, now I'm on my soapbox. When there was deliberations, we look on the crowd. And two-thirds of the department heads would be here. You, you, you guys see what's happened over the last couple of years. You get the same couple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the rest don't. You know.
Okay.
I know Bob's dying to make a motion here.
Go, Bob.
Well, I will make a motion, this this is a safe. But so we have to get it done, I do think it it highlights two additional points that. Budgeting is important, and I think you and Dan are working that, this isn't a big. To next point, this isn't a big item to the eighty-nine million, but Tommy, it is big in your all's department, right? So this is something that maybe in the future, we have a better view of what's coming down the pike.
Sure.
That'd be helpful, I think the final part is, this is a reminder to us, I think, that capital non-recurring is in there in part. To cover stuff that we just don't know. And so with all that as a kind of a.
As long as it's not another account.
Prelude to your motion.
That is the prelude, so I'd like to make a motion that the board accept. Uh, an amount of up to eight thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Thank you.
For the purpose of the public.
Ten cents.
I gave them that extra ninety.
Oh, oh, sir, you have, rounded up, I'm sorry.
For the Public Works radio system to be paid for out of capital non-recurrent.
I'll stick to your motion.
Okay, so we have a second, any other discussion on that motion? All in favor? Do you good, yeah? Excellent, thank you, Tommy, I'm sorry about the wait, alright.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Okay, um, going back to our agenda, so this, um. Brad. Was this announced in the Board of Selectmen that we, we're not?
You're you're not required to go to executive session, Mary put it on there just in case.
Okay, yeah, but it's public, and the buyer, it's not like it's supposed to be kept secret or anything, right?
Yeah, I don't think so, I think it's just.
It's the way you did it last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, again, E D C, I I know they're not here, I don't think anybody's on, um, I think they did a great job.
Yeah.
You know, this is, this is tremendous, they they're giving us numbers, they're giving us real information to go off with, so. If anybody else have any input on it. Does someone wanna make a motion? Um, Brad, is that, that could be a crazy motion or anything, or no?
Um, I don't think it's a motion, I think it's a recommendation.
No, no, we're we're making a motion to approve the sale.
I'm just trying to pull up.
What we did last.
What you did last, you had what you did last, right? Alright, let's see.
I think we just.
Speak amongst yourselves.
To approve the sale, I think that's what we thought.
You know at what meeting that was, that was.
It wasn't last, it had to be the meeting before, the meeting before.
I think it was three meetings.
So the dollar mile is four-ten, right?
Yes.
The address is twenty-two Bridge Drive Lot Four.
Yeah.
Is it any more than just to, uh, approve the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen for. Purchase of.
That's all you probably need to do.
Yeah. Bob, is that a motion?
It suffices, yes.
Hey, Mary, do you have enough on that, or you wanna try to piece that together, Bob?
To approve the sale of twenty-two Bridge Drive for four hundred and ten thousand dollars as recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, so you need to add Lot Four in there, because it was subdivision.
Thank you.
Yeah, just have the address in there, right? Yep, twenty-three, yep, Lot Four. Okay, do we have a second on Bob's motion of the sale?
I would love the second of the motion to accept that.
Excellent. Alright, any other discussion on that, do you know what we're doing on this, right, the the extra lots and all that, you've been following it?
Yep, I do, thank you.
Alright, all in favor on the sale?
Alright.
Again, great work by them. Alright. We're gonna choose unanimous. Um, I think we're up to Brad's report, this is gonna be amazing.
I don't know, I'm pretty tired of this, but yeah.
You talked a lot here tonight.
I did talk a lot, too much. I try not to interrupt Bob like, uh, Lucas, but whatever. Throw him under the butter. So I talked a little bit before about twenty-three, I didn't run it because I needed to talk to the auditor today who was in. So, hold on, I ran the report before I give you the wrong numbers. Twenty-twenty-three. Alright, so. The only change from prior month was an adjustment to the amount of revenue for twenty-twenty-three at this point. Uh, the new revenue projection for last fiscal year is that we have exceeded the budget. So to the good, if you will. Um, right now, it's at a total of two million eighty thousand and some change. It was like one point five million on the last reports. The change being. We have, uh, an account that we call the investment account for the town. That, um, we booked the gains and loss and the interest at the end of the year. So the gains in that account and the interest for the year make up the five hundred thousand dollars difference. So, and now, um. I can get you an updated number, cause hopefully we're getting, the auditors were in today. Um, so hopefully, we're getting a big, getting closer to finalizing our audit, but there's still a long way to go and a lot of moving pieces. So the change in, uh. Value. Over the prior year in this one account was four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. In some years prior, it lost that value, it's in. Mister Manfredo would know more about this, I'm sure, but it's. So pretty much what they do is they take your money, then invest it, it's stable funded. So it looks like you realized the loss in those years, but we have to report a loss at six-thirty. And then when it comes due, you then get the gain. So. That's what this change in pure value, or whatever you want, or market value, whatever you wanna call it, um, has been. Um, and the interest alone brought us then, we budgeted for interest last year four fifty, it brings what we brought in the five thirty-nine. And you'll see on the. Current year recorded, which is printed out in front of you, once I find it on here. For this year so far, four months into the year, we brought in three hundred and sixteen thousand against the four fifty that we budgeted. But at this point now, monthly. I am booking the interest from this account. So that is, so we won't have this big jump at the end anymore. Um, so, and some of that is. If you look at what interest rates are, whether you're trying to borrow or save. They're high. You know, you're getting five percent right now on a lot of things. So, um, again, when we're talking about. Revenue and parking rec. Here's another account that we're probably gonna blow past our estimate of four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, while we're talking revenue. A little bit above that, we have a line item that we budgeted for sixty thousand dollars for Perma revenue sharing. Perma was in last week, their insurance carrier, um, for. Every year that we've been eligible for, from them, we've got revenue sharing at the end of the year. This is the first year that they're not doing revenue sharing. So that sixty thousand dollars we budgeted is gonna be zero. Obviously, I'm not too concerned based on where other revenue is.
Right.
But as these things, as we learn these things, I'll let you know. Um, so the reason is. Even though Perma still. Was to the good, they weren't as good to the good as much as they usually are, they had one really large claim that cost them money, and because it's a pool. When the pool doesn't do as well, we don't do as well, because they have stop-loss insurance. Um, they didn't take like a huge hit, they just didn't do as well as they had in prior years. Um, so, and Perma. Um, I don't know how many of the board members are aware of it, the reason we switched to Perma is. Uh, seven, eight, nine years ago, we went out for a renewal for our workers' comp. And Travelers said we will do one year, and we will charge you thirty percent more than you did the year before. At that point, we said, let's see what else is out there, we switched to Perma. And Perma on our workers' comp, in part because we've done a good job. Um, the prior, uh, risk manager was amazing. The current one does a great job too, which is Sebby. And the departments have bought into a lot of our stuff, and some of it is luck at the end of the day. Um, our workers' comp number every year comes down. Um, because we're doing the work, and that's one way that the town can do the work. To try to save the taxpayers money. You know, as anybody that's ever dealt with anything. Health insurance wise, all it takes is one bad move. And you have a huge claim, but knock on wood, we've tried to limit those. And they don't hit you over the head with those as much if you're doing all the other work, trainings and everything else. Um. I touched on some of the miscellaneous state revenue earlier. That we are currently have collected a million dollars when we budgeted two eighty-two. And we haven't even gotten our two eighty-two yet. Um. Everything else, if you look at the percentages in there, we are in good shape on. Pilots at eighty-one percent. Marriage license is at forty-seven percent, so people are getting married, but I'm sure that trails off over the winter. Um, so revenue note wise, we're doing great. Um, amazing, actually, because it does take sense of the million dollars we were thinking. Um. On the expenditure side. Um, I'm really happy with what I'm seeing everywhere but parking wrecking. You know, we haven't talked a lot about parking wreck tonight, so we wanna delve into.
Yeah.
Um. So, um.
I probably asked this question before, Brad, but what what's up with probate?
Probate, we bill at the end of the year to Ridgefield Ready and New.
Alright, that's what I want.
And sometimes that goes over by thirty percent. But we don't usually freak out, cause thirty percent's usually a hundred and eighty bucks. Uh, more than that, Bob did the math on eighteen hundred bucks.
Yeah.
I saw the numbers printed up there. So revenue wise, uh, not revenue, it's late, uh, expenditure wise, I'm happy with where we're at right now. Um, we've done a ton of work tracking our utilities. That's our biggest wildcard, just like everybody's household biggest wildcard right now, pretty much. Um. Cold, this cold spell, I'm not too happy with, because our natural gas rate drops drastically on contract, December one. So, but even with our natural gas rate dropping a lot with what we're contracted for, I hope we're really warm winter.
We started using it, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, and employee benefits always, the health insurance always looks higher because we always pay a month in advance.
I can't believe we're five months into this budget spread.
I know.
I know. I can't believe I have to start working on next year's.
When is this audit gonna be over? So we can put all the pieces and transfer everything and.
Yeah, so. The trouble is getting auditors across the board are short-staffed. We prep everything. We send them stuff when we have it. It's one of those things where you have to push, push, push to get them to come out. Um, they were out today. I probably should have been home today, but I was here today pushing them. And anything they ask for, we give them, and if we can't give it to them immediately, it goes to the top of pile what we're working on. I know the chairman's asked me for for some information that I need to delve into, which I talked to the auditor a little bit about today, of what those pieces are that we need. And Nick, I will get to it.
I know you.
But the audit had to come first the last couple of days and the coming weeks. We doing our part to get the audit done. And we can only control what we can control, and we're trying to control the heck out of it. Um. The other pieces they audited us in the board event. I expressed to the auditors, I've expressed to the board of it, how important it is this, uh, committee. That the audit is done on time. The auditor told me today, in their meeting this week, they talked about us in like nine other towns about how. The pressure's on to get it done, but if they don't get all the information they need. And we go to the back of the pile, because they're not gonna.
Something missing.
Allocate resources to us if we're not ready. And that's my job to make sure the things that I can control are ready. And to push on the things I can't control. As much as I can. Um. So, that's where we're at, I'm hoping it's done December thirty-first. He told me today that they're wrapping up, uh, an audit of June right now, but June of twenty-two, for town. And they have found the city of Danbury has not completed their twenty-two audit. Um, I'm not saying because people are doing worse than us, that it's okay, it's not. I want this audit done before I really have to go crazy budget mode. For my own sake, in my office's sake, um. So. You know, we're already to that point that. We're already battling to be, because budget is coming. Um, but. It is what it is. And we will push and push and push and. Um.
And just remind me, the presentation start January tenth.
Or February, typically.
Yeah, right. Well, that's February.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said February.
Yeah, so typically what happens is. The month of December, department heads have to develop their budget, which means I have to get them the pieces they need first. Um, yay me, cause that's something else we have to do, because we're not using Open Gov anymore, so I have to create more stuff. Um, they have the month of December. To do their part.
You're putting it together in January.
I put it together, we meet with the first selectmen, all the department heads to go over their first draft of what their requests are, so we understand it. Which we should be in better. State than we were in other years, because. Last month, we just completed budget reviews. Uh, and we didn't just talk about the first quarter, when we did our quarterly budget review. We looked at what happened in twenty-three, we talked about. What does the rest of twenty-four look like, what is? Have you started thinking about what twenty-five's gonna look like? You know.
This was new between you and Dan and the department.
You know. Something else that we instituted other than the purchase orders after what happened in twenty-three. Um, again, best practice should have happened all along, um. A wise man told me lately that the department heads gotta be treated like senior leadership, and we are. But they have to also step up and be that leadership. And when I talked about them attending meetings. Um, we've usually in the past have sent out, hey, deliberations are tonight. Um, you should come. Especially if there's something that. You're worried about that might get cut, because if you're not in the room to answer the question. No one's gonna answer it for you. Um. So, again. Department heads, if they're gonna help lead this town, they gotta do it, not just from their desk, they gotta do it. In this room, when needed.
Should we make a motion to accept Brad's report?
Yeah, I just, it's just a capital thing, you you're gonna work on it this. Yeah, I just, it's just a capital thing, you, you're gonna work on it this month, so, so we'll have a better idea before next meeting, and we.
So, capital by charter is due to the Board of Selectmen, November thirty.
I'm talking about this part with the, the, the main, I say capital, I meant.
So, I'm sure Rachel heard what you said tonight, and she's already running through her head of.
Right now.
With your help, obviously.
Yes, yeah, so, but we, when we looked at twenty-three, even though salaries and programs were the biggest aspect of it.
Probably the easiest too, right, to figure out.
Easiest and hardest, because it's what people say, so, you know, maybe it's the, you know, it's not easier actually than this, it's easier, cuz it's more predictable, but it's much harder, because it means cutting stuff, you know, a hole in the fence that you used to fix, that maybe you don't, if it's not a safety issue, isn't really something that you have to deal with, until somebody goes on Facebook and says, why are the swings broken at Parlowa? Why is there a hole in the fence here? Um, and some of those answers have to be, we don't have the budget for it, when we do, we will fix it, if it's not a safety issue. You know, and they just have the budget for what the average year maintenance is, and that's not what's happened in the past, and that's what means that.
So, you'd like to make a motion?
Oh, I'd like a motion, I'd like to make a motion to accept the controller's report.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion, any of these there, everyone was good, um, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. Okay, great, thank you, Brad, and I know there's a lot, and I know you've been working on it, Brent, and, and I know we all appreciate that.
Yeah, we do.
I appreciate that.
Someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Making motion to adjourn?
We have a second?
I have a second.
Thanks. All right, all in favor, everybody?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.